Okay.
Let's move on to the workshop. Anybody have anything on item one? Got anything ready? Okay. Item two? Item three?
Uh, let me catch up here in a minute.
Okay. Okay. Item four? Any consent agenda? Item five? Elevated tanks?
I did receive several questions today on this item. One question related to whether or not we would be able to put not only the logo but the tagline. We remember our tagline is the D P O S broad wings bright future. We didn't look at that and really the size of our tagline is fairly lengthy. And to be able to put that on the water tower along with the logo, you can't get the letters big enough to really see it. So it's difficult to keep the tagline. So our focus again will be just the logos as we did on the water tower on 407.
Okay. Any other questions on that one?
Is it the same contractor?
Same contractor, yes it is.
Uh, item six? And back to regular hearings, item seven.
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple of changes I had talked to our city attorney about adding to the language of this. And we've had a couple of discussions today. She's backed out, taken the language I had in both instances and made sure we're comfortable with it. Uh, one is to extend the sale to include not property owners but heirs and assigns. And the other is to direct the city staff to prepare an order that would document the variance and its conditions and file that with the city, with the county records, with DEETS. So, and I have language, so.
Okay, good. Do you have any comments on it? Okay. Good, thank you.
I do understand from staff that the property, you've done this twice in the past in the property at 418 Wynwood. Before it was sold, it was compared back to a garage.
Good.
We do have a method of checking these according to the backup material, correct?
Yes, yes.
So we do look at them from time to time.
We will track it through new rules after.
Okay, good.
Good.
So if you're okay with that, I may want to read that motion.
I don't have a problem.
So just so I'm clear, the additional language just kicks it up to the county level so that it's seen there as well.
It, it kicks it up to the county level, but it also places the obligation on heirs and assigns. So if the owner were to, you know, pass away, then the obligation rolls, rolls in there.
We did file a similar order. Did not have the heirs' language, but we did file on the Marywood Drive properly. We used that same word.
Sure. Okay, item eight? Across the street? Okay. Item nine?
This is our annual due schedule update due along with the budget process.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Liz. It says tabled item and that is just a typo. It was this item you've never seen before, it wasn't tabled.
Thank you, Julie.
It wasn't my type.
No, no. Somebody wiped this out of my eyes.
I did, that's why.
Thank you. Cause I said, I know it said something there before.
I missed it. No, it was not a tabled item.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
No.
Okay. We'll convene in regular session at seven o'clock.
Mayor, do you want to mention that we don't have anything for closing?
Oh, yeah. Just let the council know, we don't have anything in executive session, even though there's things listed here. So I think we need to start a new deal. When we don't have anything to do back here, why even come back here?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, then just go ahead and adjourn out there. Cool.
Unless consultation with attorney, is that okay? Don't want you to lose your time.
Okay. Well, you're close, you're pretty good, though. You just need to be in a different folder.
Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. First item is invocation followed by the pledge to the American Texas flag.
Please rise. Bow our heads and for a moment of silent prayer. Amen.
Please join me in your pledge to the flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you.
Next, we have public hearings. Consideration of ordinance granting a zone change request from general business to public use on approximately 1.247 acre tract of land at the southeast corner of North Charles Street and West Church Street. Comments, the proposed zone change is for Wayne Ferguson Plaza. PNZ recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Recommendation is that city council approve the proposed ordinance is set forth in the caption above. Will, do we have a presentation for that? Richard Led, Ledke?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Over there, okay, see. Do you have anything to do?
Not unless there's any questions by the council.
Thank you. Okay. No one, I don't have any cards for anybody else. Do we have a motion to close a public hearing?
Move to close a public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close here, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Councilman Vaughn?
May I make a motion that we approve the ordinance is set forth in the caption above?
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Vaughn, a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Mayor?
Attorney's trying to get your attention.
I was, I was being distracted.
Sorry.
I wouldn't have got that, I wouldn't have done that.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Louisville, Texas by rezoning an approximately 1.247 acre tract of land out of the J W King survey abstract number 696, located at the southeast corner of North Charles Street and West Church Street from general business district zoning to public use district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interests and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item two, public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change request from general business and Old Town Center Business District to Old Town Center Business District on approximately 1.216 acre tract of land bounded by West Church Street to the north, West Main Street to the south, North Charles Street to the west, and North Mill Street to the east. Comments? The proposed zoning change request is for the area budding Wayne Ferguson Plaza. PNZ recommended approval of a vote of six to zero. Recommendation is that the city council approve the proposed ordinance is set forth in the caption above. And we do have Richard here again if there's any questions. No question. Do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close by Councilman Gilmore, second? Second by Councilman Vaughn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, move to approve as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Louisville, Texas by rezoning an approximately 1.216 acre tract of land out of the J W King survey abstract number 696, bounded by West Church Street to the north, West Main Street to the south, North Charles Street to the west, and North Mill Street to the east. From general business district zoning and Old Town Center Business District zoning to Old Town Center Business District zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interests and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item three, public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for four associated variances on a 0.77 acre lot located at 819 Hillside Drive. Comments? The SUP request is to place a communication tower at the rear of the site. Staff review of the required development plan resulted in the following four variance requests. One, to allow variable width landscape buffer in lieu of the required 10-foot landscape strip. Two, to waive the 40-foot stacking requirement on driveway entrances into the site. Three, to allow the use of crepe myrtles in addition to the approved tree list. site. Three, to allow the use of crepe myrtles in addition to the approved tree list. And four, to waive the required 20-foot driveway radio. P N Z recommended approval of the S U P by a vote of six to zero. Recommendation is that the City Council approve the proposed ordinance and requested variances as set forth in the caption above. Again, we have Richard here, if you have any questions. Are there any questions at this time? Okay. Do we have a motion to move to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve as written.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve as presented, second by Councilman Ferguson?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Louisville, Texas by granting a special use permit for the construction of a communications tower on an existing 0.77 acre lot legally described as Lot 1, Block B, Hillside Office Park, located at the southeast corner of Hillside Drive and Office Park Circle in Zone Light Industrial District, providing for severability, providing a penalty, providing a repealer, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item is the visitor citizen forum. At this time, any person with business before the council, not scheduled on the agenda, may speak to the council. No formal action will be taken on these items at this meeting. I do have one card. Adriana Arianna King? Come on up. And if you would, give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Arianna Sokanis King.
Why don't you pull that microphone down a little bit, will you?
Do I have to?
Okay.
There we go.
It won't hurt.
I live at 215 West Walters. I've lived on that street for 38 years. I'm a little concerned. We had some letters that were mailed out to everyone in the neighborhood about a survey that was, they were going to be surveying our property for road improvements. We were supposed to sign off on the survey to have them on our property. I never signed off, and they were all over my front yard. Can you tell me what they're surveying for? Does anyone know what they're doing surveys on Walter Street for?
Let's see if we can get the staff. Maybe they can talk to you about something.
Mayor, I think City Engineer David Solomon can probably talk with Ms. King. Appears maybe, well, one of the contractors doing survey work for the northwest Louisville street improvements.
Okay. If that's okay, they'll talk to you.
Okay.
And can you do it right now? Are you going to wait a little bit? Right now, they'll just meet you outside?
You can do it right now. Okay, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I had on the visitors and citizen. Next item is consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I do not have anything to be pulled. Councilman Tierney?
Move to approve.
Second.
To approve by Councilman Tierney, second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item is item seven, regular hearings. Consideration of a variance to section 6-121 parking requirements based on use at 948 Boxwood Drive. Comments, property owner desires to convert the garage of her single-family residence to a living space in order to provide residence for her grandchildren as they have significant needs that require assistance. The property owner agrees to convert the garage back should she sell the residence or the children relocate. Similar variances were granted by City Council on August 15, 2011, for 418 Windwood Drive, and March 18, 2013, for 1121 Marywood Drive, although both were rear-entry garages. Recommendation is that City Council consider the variance for the garage enclosures as set forth in the caption above, and if approved, the enclosure is to be returned to a garage at such time the residence sold or the conversion is vacated by the Baggett family. Presentation by Cleve Joyner. And also have here a card from the property owner, Ms. Baggett, that is here to answer any questions, if we have any. Does anybody have any questions at this time?
No, sir. Mayor, I think Cleve is out talking with the Baggett family. They have children there, and she's the only one, so I think she's advising this item is up.
Okay. Okay.
And I don't believe Mr. Joyner has a formal presentation. He'll just respond to any questions the council might have.
And Ms. Baggett, if you didn't hear it, we just, we said that you had a card with us, but you were here for questions if we had any. So, thank you. Okay. Any questions at this time? Okay. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, Mayor. I'd make a motion. I want to make sure the language on this is good as far as the conversion of the garage back, if that time comes. So I move to approve the variance for the garage enclosure as set forth in the caption, on the condition that the enclosure is converted back to a garage if the property owner, parentheses S, owners, grandchildren relocate, or if the property owner, parentheses S, owners, their heirs or assigns sell the residence. I further direct city staff to prepare an order documenting the variance and its conditions and filing said order in the Denton County deed records.
Okay. Does anybody have a second for that?
I second, Mayor.
Okay. A second by Councilman Vaughn. Ms. Baggett, did you understand what was being said on that one? Okay, okay. Thank you. Just want to make sure you understood that part, okay?
Mayor, I have a question I'd like to ask the attorney.
Go ahead, Councilman Vaughn.
I too am in favor of granting this ordinance. But my question is, can we make this Councilman Ferguson's recommendation retroactive to the properties that we have already given an ordinance to, being that it will not have any impact on this, on them? It'll just be a recording issue with the county?
Well, we can't discuss that because those properties aren't on the agenda. I can speak with you after the meeting if you want to discuss that. But speaking about other properties that aren't on the agenda, we can't talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Ferguson, and a second by Councilman Vaughn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. We're down to item eight. Consideration of an ordinance abandoning North Potter Street right-of-way between West Main Street and West Church Street. This section of North Potter Street right-of-way has been incorporated into the new Wayne Ferguson Plaza. Recommendation is that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Daniels?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any further discussion?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, providing for the abandonment, vacation, and closure of the following street segments to wit North Poitras Street from West Main Street, West Church Street, and providing for the terms and conditions of this abandonment, vacation, and closure, and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item nine, consideration of an ordinance amending the Louisville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 8, Section 2-201 Fee Schedule. Comments, the proposed fee change includes fees discussed at the budget workshop held on August 1st and new fees. Details for each recommended change are included in the backup information. Recommendation is that the City Council approve the ordinance A. Okay. Councilman Vaughn?
May I make a motion that we approve the ordinance as stated?
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second by Councilman Ferguson?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending the Louisville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Section 2-201 Fee Schedule, with various fees charged by several departments of the city, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you all. Now we have reports. Richard?
None at this time, sir.
Okay. Get some. Thank you. Linda? Russ?
I just wanted to remind everyone that our timeframe for watering, the time restrictions has expired. That was in effect from May 1 to September 30. We still have our twice-per-week, but the time restrictions of no watering between 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. did expire September 30.
Okay, thank you. Nothing? Eric? Okay, Steve? Councilman Daniels?
Yes, Mayor. The first thing I want to mention is Thursday, Keep Louisville Beautiful Garden Secrets class, How to Become a Denton County Master Gardener, is going to be held at the City Annex there over by the library. So that's there. And we still have another meeting between now and then, but on October 24th, Make a Difference Day, Keep Louisville Beautiful is going to be planting natural wildflowers and stuff like that out at Lila and be doing that and looking for volunteers for that. And then the last thing I want to say, this is the first meeting since an incredibly successful Western Days, and I just want to thank the staff and congratulate the staff. I've been here for 27 years, and this was my favorite Western Days ever. It was, turned out fantastic, and everybody should be congratulated on a good job.
Nothing, sir?
Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, our wonderful animal shelter this month is having a fundraiser. For the entire month, if you go down to the shelter, you can pick up a pumpkin for a suggested minimum donation of $5. Now, I happen to know that a lot of folks buy pumpkins this time of year, so this would be an outstanding opportunity to help the Animal Services Department provide that high level of care that they're known for, as well as to maybe go find a new family member for the fall. And if you have the opportunity, head on down there now. That also accumulates into a Pumpkins for Pets Howl-a-Ween on October 30 from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And there will be activities and events there that are pet-friendly, so we hope you come out at the end of the month. But anytime between now and the end of the month, go get a pumpkin for five bucks or more. That's all I have, Mayor.
See you, Major.
Mayor and council, we don't have final numbers yet on Western Days. It does take a little while to get the specifics back, but I can tell you that we estimate that we had about 24,000 people attend Western Days this year, and I do believe that is a record.
It is so much better when the weather cooperates with us.
Yes.
Those rainy nights were really bad. I know that. All the work that everybody did, and when you can't get anything for it, so. But it was very nice. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, Mayor. I've got several things. First of all, the Great Gatsby Gala is a reservation required benefit put on by Special Abilities of North Texas. That's on Friday, October 9, this coming Friday. There's a stand-up comedy series that we've done in the M C L Grand. There'll be a couple of guys there, John Fitch and Sean Eli, on Friday, October 16. In the black box, we have a songwriter series that's going to bring back a group that was incredibly popular and phenomenal performers in our Texas Tune series, Two Bit Palomino. If you didn't catch Two Bit Palomino on the Texas Tune series, you might want to catch them on this. They're very entertaining. Their music's very diverse. I think you'll have a great time. The Lake Cities Ballet is going to perform Dracula from October 16 through 17, three shows. I'll make a comment on this one. So some people, you say ballet, and they go, man, that's not me. You need to think of this as just really amazing stage entertainment. It really is scary. It's really a lot of fun. It's really entertaining. It's evil. It's wicked. It's weird. It's nothing that you would expect. But it's all for the family, the whole family. So I would encourage you all to give that a try. It's a fun show, and it might even change your mind about what all the definition of ballet means. 35 Express is doing a public meeting this Thursday, October 8, and that's presented by Tex Dot Dallas, and that'll be at the M C L Grand also. Fridays, we always have the Visual Art League Jam sessions, and then there's a what they call Grand Stand-Up Comedy Series, Episode 2, coming up on October 30. As far as art exhibits, Hard Twist, The Western Ranch Women continues in the main gallery. That's on loan from the National Cowgirl Hall of Fame, an amazing exhibit by a single photographer, black and white photography. You'll go and you'll stay and stay, and it's just, you'll stare at some of these pictures and get lost in them. They're just amazing. And then in the north gallery, Women of the West, a related exhibit. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Vaughn?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of things I'd like to invite the people to. Wayne Ferguson Plaza is going to, across the street here from City Hall, is going to have their dedication ceremony on Tuesday, the 13th, at 6:30 in the E P M. And I would invite everybody to come out. They're going to have food trucks available, and it should be a good time for all. Next, I would like to invite you to the Louisville High School Homecoming Parade. That's going to take place October 15 at 6:00 p.m. It's going to start at Main and Cowan, and it's going to go down Main Street and Church, and there's going to be a pep rally at the end of it on the steps of City Hall. And the final item I'd like to bring your attention to is the dam half and 5K run on October 18. And you'll get a chance to run across the dam in both directions, and it's my understanding that generally pedestrian and vehicle traffic is not allowed on the dam, so you'll get a chance to have some views that you might not normally get. And they're going to further entice you with long-sleeved T-shirts and water bottles. Thank you very much, Mayor. That's all.
Counselor? City Secretary? Okay. Officer? Thanks for being here. Thanks for your service to the community, along with all the, your fellow staff. Thank you. We don't have anything for closed session, so our next item would be...
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to close, to adjourn, and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Sure not.